Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to our regular board meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 3rd. And we'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting. Present, board members present are... Oh wait, I'm going... Yeah, I think what we're gonna do is... I'm gonna call us to order, then I'm gonna do the roll call, and then I'm gonna do this flag salute. So then I'll move to you, Josh. So board members present in the boardroom, we have members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. Member Holloman is excused. We also have Dr. Bryant, our superintendent, and we have Joshua Pack, our student representative. And with that, Josh, will you lead us into the pledge? Lead the pledge, and then the land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
And thank you very much. So again, we welcome you to our meeting. We appreciate that you're here, and we appreciate the support that you give to the Anchorage School District through your time, your talents, and of course, your tax dollars. And that brings us to item three, approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I would approve the agenda as written.
A move by member Jacobs, second by member Higgins, to approve the agenda as written. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition to approving the agenda as presented? Seeing, hearing, none, the agenda is approved as written or presented. And that brings us to item B on our agenda, our reports, starting with our military report.
Good evening.
Welcome Colonel Dunn.
Thank you ma'am. Hope everyone's doing great today. Just a couple of things for the military report. We're starting to just get prepared for inclement weather. We had our snow and ice control meeting for the base. We stay in pretty good communications with the school district. We monitor what you all do and try to stay somewhat in sync. We won't always close down if the school district closes down. A lot of times, it'll depend on the conditions on the base. But we make sure we let you all know what we're doing and obviously, the principals and the schools that are on base, and we stay in pretty good communication. So we're getting ready. We're hoping it isn't as bad as last year. We had some pretty heavy snows that even overwhelmed us a little bit. And so hopefully, it's not as bad this year. We also had some local schools host the Air Force's AIM Team this year. And so AIM acronym stands for Aviation Inspiration and Mentorship. It's a team of airmen that comes from bases around the country to inform, influence, and inspire youth from diverse backgrounds about aviation. The AIM Wing focuses on reaching out into the community to not only provide information on aviation-related careers, but also general pathways to success, no matter what career a student may choose. So we're really glad that the AIM Team was able to come out to Alaska and support the Anchorage School District's College Career and Life Ready Initiative for all students. Thank you to the schools that hosted the AIM Team this school year, and we look forward to sharing experiences like this in the future and keeping that going in future years. And then finally, in the military, we continue to have new families move into the area, new students coming into our schools, and we're just thankful to all the schools and principals that are receiving our military children. They've been doing a great job getting them integrated and just helping them with that transition, especially this time of year when parents are moving children in the middle of the school year. So we really appreciate the support of all the schools throughout the district. And with that, that's it for what I have. Do you all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Colonel Dunn? Well, we thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, 3-2, item 3-2 is Student Representative Report.
So my comment today is rather short. To recap, our next Student Advisory Board meeting is gonna be next Tuesday on the 10th from 11:15 to 1:15. So if any school board members want to attend that, we are more than thankful to have you guys there on board and we could add you onto the agenda. And we are meeting tomorrow with our e-board to plan for that meeting. And in other news, we are planning to take the resolution for the Matu School District Resolution on the Student Representative to the Alaska Association of Student Governments Conference, which is coming up next week from the 13th to the 15th. And we are taking a decent number of ASD students there. And we're looking forward to that. It is gonna be in Fairbanks this year, this fall. And yeah, that sums up my report.
Thank you. Any questions for our student representative? Josh, I would like to just share that I sent to the advisors, to Mr. -- to the SAB advisors, an invitation for the Youth Leadership Institute that will be held here in Anchorage. I think it's the week of the 9th through the 12th, I believe. So if you can add that to your list. I'm not sure how many students. We usually send four to six students. But if you can work with your advisors to figure that out, that would be great. We'd love to have you with us. Oh, member Lessons?
I just wanted to share to Mr. Pack that if neither Dora, neither member Wilson nor myself can attend the upcoming meeting, we can prepare a short update from the board's perspective, perhaps for you to share with your student leaders.
Thank you. That's good, okay. All right, and now that brings us to... Any other questions for our student or comments? All right, thank you. That brings us to item C on the agenda, our goal monitoring report, first reading. Dr. Bryant?
All right, thank you, Madam President. So we're back. This is our first goal monitoring conversation of the school year. So we'll start off with a technical report on our interim goal data. We're still waiting on the AK-Star data from the state, but at least at our next board meeting, we can have our first formal monitoring on reading proficiency on our interim goals. Next slide, please. So for this technical report, we'll talk about our interim goals. In the top part of the slide, you'll see the draft of the goal that the board has been working on at the last couple of retreats. It's not been finalized by the board, but I put it out there based on our last conversation a few Saturdays ago. And at the bottom of the slide, you'll see a paragraph that provides some context for the delay in state reporting of Alaska Star results and their progress to date on that front. So should the board adopt the goal in the previous slide, these would be the, or at least a few of the interim goals that the administration would adopt that we also discussed at our most recent retreat. And this is the data that we'll be discussing today. So the interim goal 1.1 that is pending the board's approval of the revised goals would be looking at K1 students at or above reading benchmark on M-class. And the goal is to get to 80% above benchmark by spring 2028. And the second interim goal, 1.2, is similar, but it's for grade two, so 80% above benchmark by spring 2028. On this slide, it'll provide the board more context on what is the M-class assessment. It's relatively new, but this is something that we're monitoring as part of the Alaska Reads Act. It is our screening tool. And on the next slide, the board will be given a breakdown of how students are categorized based on their M-class performance. Blue is the best-case scenario. That would mean a student is above benchmark. And on the flip side, red is well below benchmark, and those are the students that are at risk and need intensive supports. So now let's get to our actual data. So this slide shows our grade K1 M-class DIBLs data. So at the very top of the slide, you'll notice that that's the combined grades K1. In other words, that represents interim goal 1.1. Red, need the most intensive supports. And blue, on the flip side, need the fewest supports, relatively speaking, they're above benchmark. And then for your reference, we broke down the data by grades K and grades 1, which allows you to see those trends between those two groups, and they are different. And we can discuss that at our next goal monitoring meeting. The second slide represents grade 2 M-class data. Red would be below the benchmark, and green and blue represent at or above the benchmark. It's a separate slide because this represents a separate interim goal. And on this slide, we'll give you a little bit more information around the Alaska Reads Act. So it gives some key points as to what are the Alaska Reads Act's requirements, and includes relevant language and statute at the very bottom in terms of which students shall receive[829.82][829.85]intensive intervention services per the law. And on this next slide, it further shows how ASD will operationalize the Alaska Reads Act, which includes information on individual reading improvement plans, which our families will be hearing a lot about in the coming weeks, as well as guidance for supporting students in need of the most intensive supports. This slide should look familiar. This will describe the strategic plan for improving reading proficiency. Next slide. So this provides a high-level overview of the goal, the administration's instructional focus, and our approach to improving reading proficiency. And this is the most important of those last couple of slides because it shows the implementation status across the strategic plan, which includes strands such as the multi-tiered systems of supports, data discussions, professional learning, instruction, and curriculum. I'm excited that professional learning communities are now a part of the strategic plan for elementary reading now that we've implemented our late start Mondays. That'll be a huge win for the implementation of better supports for kids. And that concludes today's technical rapport. At our next meeting, we'll have our formal discussion on student outcomes data shared today. We welcome your questions. Feel free to send them in advance, or we'll also be ready to discuss them at the table two weeks from now.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Board members, just a reminder to... As the questions come up, please send them to Amanda and I, and we will get them to the superintendent, or in fact, send them to the superintendent and I and Amanda, and probably Katie, so we cover all our bases. And then we will have our full discussion at our next meeting. Okay? Thank you very much. Thanks, Dr. Bryant. And now that brings us to our first public comment period. The board has set aside a one-hour time slot at the beginning of each of our meetings for public comment. Though any comments that are in excess of that hour will be heard at the second opportunity, which is at the end of our agenda. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to talk or speak, and the board's time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. If there are any action items, there will be opportunity... Individuals can also sign up to testify on those action items. To be productive, our meetings are structured. They must be structured and civil. We conduct our meetings under Robert's Rules of Order, which is a set of rules for orderly meetings that have been around since the 1800s. These rules require the board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinions and statements. As president of the board, it is my duty to enforce our rules of civility and decorum as such and consistent with Robert's Rules of Order. I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of the rules or fail to conduct themselves in a civil manner. As you entered the boardroom, there is a blue and white sheet that will give you the rules of decorum for this space. And with that, we will start with our in-person testimony, our public comment. First, we have Elizabeth Serrano. Elizabeth Serrano. There you go, come back to her. Let's try Juliana Shields. Welcome. You have three minutes.
I'm Dr. Juliana Shields, and I'm a parent of two children.
Can you pull the mic up so we can?
Or I can sit.
Okay.
You could bash. Okay. I'm Dr. Juliana Shields. I am a parent of two children in the school district and a recent graduate. I'm not a recent graduate. I have a child who's a recent graduate. I know I look good, but anyhow. I'm opposed to the district's plans to transition sixth-grade students out of elementary education and into middle schools. I'm concerned about the social and emotional well-being of our students, as well as their academics. Sixth graders are less equipped to navigate the challenges and exposures of a larger school environment. We are disrupting children's development at a crucial point in the hopes that a few students will have earlier access to higher-level math. However, data show that kids who stay in elementary school for sixth grade outperform their peers in both reading and math compared to sixth graders who are housed in middle school. The study I'm referring to is from "Grade Configuration is Associated with High..." With "School Level Standardized Test Pass Rates" for sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students from School Effectiveness and School Improvement by Ann Malone, DG Cornell, and Kay Shakula, published in 2020. I would like to emphasize not only these concerns about children's emotional, social, and academic well-being, but also the importance of maintaining transparency throughout this decision-making process. I'm struggling with the idea that we're moving thousands of kids out of their well-established neighborhood schools for them to be able to take a music elective more often. Thus far, what has been primarily shared by the district is a six-bullet-point list of benefits and challenges regarding this sixth-grade transition. I find it much more likely that this is a financially motivated decision and ultimately is going to lead to redistricting, closing elementary schools, and displacing excellent teachers. The Anchorage School District has not come forward with their plans demonstrating what this transition is going to look like, despite moving ahead with the sweeping plan that all sixth graders will move to middle school. At this point, it's not even clear that there's physical space in the buildings for the number of children being moved. It seems that the district's plan is massive, but it is wildly underdeveloped and hasty. A clear plan would outline future moves, discuss the impact of moves, and allow for community feedback before moving forward. If this is about money, just tell us. The district has put the cart before the horse and is leaving the community in the dark. The school board must conduct a thorough and objective analysis of the potential impacts of moving sixth grade to middle school, including academics, social and emotional learning, and impacts to the larger Anchorage community. This is going to change the architecture of the Anchorage community. These results must be shared with the community with an opportunity for input before moving ahead. Our children's education is at the heart of this matter, and it's crucial that we make well-informed decisions that prioritize their well-being and their future success. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shields. Next, we have Sarah Falkoff. Welcome, Sarah. You have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Falkoff, and I have fifth grader and a seventh grader in your school district, and they have both been very happy, and thank you for your service. I am talking as well about the move to sixth grade, and I'm going to get to my spot. I have concerns, just as Juliana just shared, is that there's been no community involvement, no surveys, no townhouse discussion, and no rationale posted on your website and the other hot topics. What has spurred this decision? If it's academic, what research are you using to base that on? You submitted a literature review last year that clearly showed that moving children to sixth grade out of elementary schools has negative impacts that persist till 10th grade and particularly affect children of minority. If it's not for academic reasons, it would be the transparency would be appreciated. You used, for the school start times and the school closures that were happening last year, you had a lot of discussion and transparency. There was a lot of feedback. And when you look on your hot topics, there is data and there are supporting facts that you put up, which I found very helpful about those content, but particularly the school start times. The changes that you are suggesting for the thousands of children will be affecting the districting and the lottery, which is a small but important group of kids because it provides the choice that this school district has given to parents and children. It's really incredible that you can find a school that best suits your child's needs. And when you... I can only imagine that you will have to shut elementary schools when looking at the numbers. You know, you're gonna be changing the whole districting and zoning and choices that parents have. And this school district has done an incredible job on that. The other thing I'd like to say is my daughter is a fifth grader, and COVID hit these kids. I mean, we don't know the... I'm not a elementary... I'm not a researcher, but we know there's been huge effects by having missing from first grade to second grade, and that persisted through third grade. And those effects aren't positive. And now taking this group of fifth graders and making them the guinea pigs for an unknown, unplanned event is really scary. So what a... No curriculum has really been offered. The six bullet points are very minimal. The idea that you will have sixth graders taking seven classes without a team created yet is a little bit discerning, is difficult for me. So I'm hoping to know what the metrics you'll be using to say if this is a successful move, if you don't have metrics that are making you make this move. In addition, with the new start times, you will have younger children being home alone longer, potentially with a 10:30 start time on Mondays, and walking home at night at 4:00 p.m. for a long period of time. So I'm asking you to please create a plan and share your plan and reasons with the community so we can respond appropriately, and if necessary, pause.
Thank you very much. Next, Sarah Whitterson. Sarah, welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Whitterson, and this is my ninth year as a TOTAM member. I come here today to plead for your help in protecting TOTAM employees and to ask for help in creating a safe space for us to be heard. The statements against the TOTAM Union that I make tonight are harsh only because of the truth that the consequences reflect. I do not want division. On the contrary, I want my colleagues to be united and empowered, but I am tired of the unethical practices and want all voices to be heard and respected. Recently, a copy of a letter was sent to the school board regarding the state of the TOTAM Association leadership. In this letter, several of my colleagues and I explained how the Spring 2023 elections were held fraudulently according to our current bylaws. The election was just one major example of the corruption within the TOTAM Association. After pressure has caused them to follow our bylaws, the TOTAM Board has recently acknowledged their errors publicly. However, that does not make them fit to sit on the board and make decisions for our members. The damage has been done. Those of us willing to use our voice have been bullied and blacklisted from helping our union officially. Since our president is also the president of APEA and holds other leadership roles in the American Federation of Teachers, TOTAM employees have nowhere to turn to handle this internally. We need your help. Everything decided by the current TOTAM Board is invalid because of their fraudulent and unethical practices and should be considered void. The TOTAM president's full-time salary and benefits are paid by leave that dues-paying members are required to contribute on top of their monthly dues that we pay. This paycheck is not cut by the TOTAM Association. It is paid by the Anchorage School District. That makes ASD her employer and supervisor. You have the responsibility to your TOTAM employees to make sure that the checks that you cut are paid to employees that uphold the same moral and ethical standards that you expect from all ASD employees. As the elections are held in violation of the bylaws, they are fraudulent and invalid. This action nullifies the president being elected and any monies paid for salaries since July 1st, 2023 should be returned. Any documents made under the signature of the president since July 1st, 2023 are also invalid. While TOTAM members desperately need a new contract and a major increase in pay and fair benefits, I don't believe that negotiating with the union that does not have valid leadership is the right thing to do. We ask that the negotiations be suspended for one year to correct the issues within TOTAM leadership. The school district cannot afford to alienate the TOTAM employees. We are overworked, overlooked, and severely underpaid, and I beg of you to listen and act.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Joey Cataraccino. She's on the phone. Ms. Cataraccino? Star six to unmute.
Did that work?
Yep, that worked.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President and board members. I apologize, I'm not in person. That was my intention. And thank you for listening to me over the phone. I am going to start out with my request and go into the details. I'm asking you, the school board, to take the sixth-grade move to middle school, as it's called a project on the school website, to the appropriate session and vote that the Anchorage School District administration halts this middle school project until a comprehensive plan can be written and public and community input can be had. There's a little bit of a theme here this... early in this meeting is why are we just now hearing from parents about the sixth-grade move? The information was just posted, and therefore, it must have been okayed with everybody. I'm here to tell you it was not okay with everybody, but most of the community was so caught up in Times and Freshman Academy and all of the changes that the school district's putting on us, I believe that the school board, the parents, the community, the teachers have not had time to digest this project as it's said. I'm the current president of Chugatch Optional. I'm also a product of ASD. My father graduated from ASD, and so did my children. Three generations of ASD students. We are very proud to be from this district. Like many schools, Chugatch has many interested parents and community members. Last year, the reason why you're just now hearing from us is in the fall of 2022, Chugatch and many specialty programs were told that they could keep the sixth grade in the interim research of moving the sixth grade. There was a little bit of dissension in this past 48 hours that... There are schools like Chugatch. There are other schools that were very, very surprised to hear that all 100% of sixth graders were moving to the middle school model. Because of that, I, as the president and the community, sent letters to the school district halting this and asking that they keep their word and allow Chugatch to keep the sixth grade. With these intended letters, they did just that. They actually reversed the decision and gave Chugatch Optional the choice. I am incredibly thankful for that. And with that leaves a lot of questions. If we had so much more time, seven months ago last year, to be able to thoughtfully make this a choice, we have to have some answers. As you've heard from the other people in the room, there's nothing. Academically, it's not supported to move sixth graders. Emotionally, it's not supported to move sixth graders. Our current models of Mirror Lake, Begedge, and Clark are beautiful models of buildings that actually house pods, which segregates the sixth graders. Ultimately, they're within their own school.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Next, we have Cory Ains. Welcome, Cory. You have three minutes.
Thank you, President Bellamy and school board members. I have one overriding mission this year, and that is to save, to keep 400 educators from resigning and retiring. And I'm going to implore you to make some changes that we all should be doing to make our working environments the best they can to encourage everyone to stay. We can't afford to lose an additional 400 educators this year, and I believe we're on that path. So I'm here tonight to address conferences coming up. We have elementary conferences in particular. Elementary conferences are in 20-minute intervals. They're based on two days' worth of work, and there are approximately 27 meeting times available for our educators, for our students and families to sign up. Yet, last year, I ship. So 27 conferences, that's without, that's a six-hour time period without a break, without a bathroom break, without lunch or a dinner, whatever. It's 1:00 to 7:00 is the first day, and then 1:00 to 4:00 the second day, 27 straight. So maybe the realistic number is 25, so they can get a break. That being shared, last year, we had 203 classes that were over 25, 25 students per class. We raised BTR, so I can only assume that number is greater. So we have a huge number of classes, a huge number of families and students who are going to be fighting for really a small number of conference slots. And it's been past practice to do that, to make up those conferences at other times. Well, I have an email. I have tons of messages for you guys. Duty every day until 3:45. This ends up being 25 to 30 minutes of duty every day, five hours a week, and on top of that, we have morning meetings, out-of-building trainings, required Zoom meetings, and meetings during my planning period to do. It just goes on and on. There's just not enough time. So I guess what I'm asking is for us to, what is the purpose of these conferences? Is it to have good communications with our families? Is it to share information? Is it to meet the Alaska Reads Act now? Like, what is the purpose? And to make sure that we have time to meet with all of our students and families? We want to communicate well. Teachers want to work and be with their students and families, but we're just not providing the time. So I think we need to look at that schedule, and we need to reevaluate if it's meeting our needs, if our parents and families are able to accommodate, be accommodated within that schedule, and do our part. Again, it's a very big task we're asking our educators to fulfill. We want to meet with our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kristin Bologna. Online? Nope, I don't see her. Let's try Susan Ritter. Welcome, Susan. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Susan Ritter. Oh, first of all, it's great to see everybody here, school board members, Superintendent Bryant, ASD leadership. My name is Susan Ritter. I work at West High School as a life skills teacher, no longer at service. I came here probably unprepared as well as I should be, but I wanted to let you all know how folks are feeling in teachers. Your elementary classroom teachers are pulling their hair out. They've got a lot of work on their plates. They're being, given a lot of demands. They are not finding support in, maybe from their supervisors, their principals, maybe their coworkers. I, there's a communication site that we teachers chit chat about, and I'm just reading and hearing people are very tired and uncertain where they're supposed to be spending all of their energies. Mr., Cory just mentioned about the upcoming parent-teacher conferences. It's a lot of pressure to get 30 minutes per student to their parents and having enough time to go to the bathroom in between conferences. I mean, there's just, the time is so tight that I don't know whether it's appreciated by the board. Maybe you think it's going to work. Maybe it's not going to work, but you need to be aware. We are at high school. We are always looking for paraprofessionals in special education. One of my coworkers went out and beat the bushes and got two people to work in our program. So we're doing our due diligence and trying to get extra people working for us in order to us to provide that education that we want to give to our life skills students. I do want to say that there is good communication, at least from my part, with our special education department. I just had a nice chat with Pam shortly ago about getting some clarification, and I feel privileged about that because I've been here for a number of years, and I have a rapport with leadership, or actually just will call them up because I was told years ago, don't bother them. They, you know, don't email them. Talk, go through the channels. I'm like, no, you don't go through channels if you need an answer. But not everybody has that boldness about them. And so I just wanted to convey, as I wrap up here, that your teachers are doing an excellent job. They're stressed out. Help them. Tell them that you love them. Tell them that they're doing a great job, and give them all the support that they deserve because they're doing a wonderful job for our students. So thank you very much.
And thank you very much. And that concludes our persons to be heard tonight. Moving on to our, back to our agenda, item E, consent.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Moved by Jacobs, second by Higgins, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any board member that want anything pulled? I should have asked that first. From the consent agenda. Okay, not seeing any. The motion before you is to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Jacobs, second by Higgins. We'll do a voice vote.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And Student Representative Pack?
Yes.
And that motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is item F, which is our action item. Do you have the information, Member Jacobs?
Madam President, I move to approve the reinstatement of the student associated with ASD incident number 1359015 as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Jacobs, second by Member Wilson to reinstate the student that was discussed during executive session today. We'll do a voice vote. I mean, yes, please do a voice vote.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and that passes 6-0. Moving on to item G, non-action items. That item will come back before you with possibly others next time. So memorandum 040 will be moved to, either moved to consent or action, the board's choice. We do not have any other individuals signed up to, for the second hour of public comment. So that brings us to I, the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening to the school board. So it's finally October, and it's getting a little cold, isn't it? And I'm excited about that, my second winner. I first off want to start by saying Happy National Principal Appreciation Month to all of our incredible building leaders who play truly a critical role in our communities and to advance student learning. And I also want to shout out, there are some fantastic educators in the room right now, our teachers, both here and throughout the community, who we truly value. And I know we have a long ways to go to figure out ways to do whatever we can to support our teachers, but truly, they are what's going to make student achievement possible. So we welcome this feedback that we've gotten, and we hear you, and we need to figure out what we can do to band together. Resources are tight, but kindness and humility is free. So that's important to know. So I want to point out a couple things. So the upcoming months will be focused on change management as we prepare for two major shifts for next school year, which were referenced earlier today. And the first would be the shift on the transition of sixth graders to middle school. So an initial FAQ was released to families, and we'll continue to field questions and concerns to make this transition a smooth one. This was the culmination of many months of conversation in the previous year. Initially, and I want to be clear about this, the conversation around sixth grade and middle school did emerge during the budget development process, but we actually moved forward as a board, not actually to save money. In fact, it'll cost resources to make this the success that we want it to be, but we truly value the impact of the middle school model, which gives teachers an extra hour on top of PLCs to work with students. And then, of course, some of the other benefits that we've discussed as a board, including access to advanced coursework, but also all students having access to a greater variety of extracurricular activities and other resources. So it is a shift for our community, but I do want to underscore that nationally, 6A is a tried and true model. It's a model that's also worked here in ASD. So we want to do what we can in terms of the infrastructure and ensuring that our teachers are prepared to make that transition. But I do think that it's one that's going to set us on the path we need to be as we move towards our college career and life readiness initiative. So more information on this topic can be found at asdk12.org/middlemerge, and you can get some school-level information. The school-level information is very important, especially for our families that attend charter, alternative, or whole-school optional programs because there's some building-specific guidance. And I do want to thank the board for the opportunity to take a year to do this. When we had this conversation around six, seven months ago, I think we all recognize that this is a big lift, and there are a lot of moving pieces. So the reason why we're taking this year is because the community is right. We need to see a plan. We need to understand what are the ins and outs and mechanics of this, and that's what this planning year is about. So step one was the FAQ, but there are more steps to come. There are some very good questions out there around facility capacity and student enrollment and numerous operational challenges. So we thank you for being patient with us. As behind the scenes, we are very aggressively looking at those numbers and having those conversations so we can communicate the next steps to the community. Change management in an organization this large is complex, but we need to keep our eye on the ball when it comes to communication to families because the questions that are being asked are very valid. But these are very complex things, and we need to double and triple review these numbers so the community knows what to expect. So with that said, I also want to point out that school start times is around the corner. We didn't want to aggressively talk about that too early because we didn't want families to think the school start times were happening this school year. But now that we're well into the school year, it's the right time to start talking about next year, the sixth grade transitions, and also next year, we'll go ahead and realign our start times to better align with the science of adolescent sleep. So more to come on that communication front. And again, there is some very important information around facilities that we're working on for the middle school move. We're not quite ready to share that out publicly yet, but that's the top priority that we're working on internally. So switching gears, October 12th is our College Career and Life Readiness Community convening. It's going to be a packed house. I believe we're at capacity, and we look forward to getting input from the community on the vision for what the academies of Anchorage looks like. Yesterday, I presented at a Chamber of Commerce forum, and I announced to the community, and I'll announce it again, that ASD received a five-year, $15 million grant from the United States Department of Education to invest specifically in our college career and life readiness transformation. That's huge because we have a very tough budget cycle ahead of us, but despite that, it provides many of us in the room some relief that there's a path to continue our transformation at full speed. So a major appreciation goes out to the school board for setting the bold vision for college career and life readiness, and also a job well done to our incredible college career and life readiness team for successfully pursuing this funding opportunity. Lastly, at our next board meeting, I look forward to returning to our regular goal monitoring. We'll dive into the reading screener data that we previewed today and provide some insight into how the Alaska Reads Act is being implemented this year, and we can answer some questions about what that looks like in terms of conferences and the strain that puts on the staff. And as we've shared before, there's also a budgetary impact that the Alaska Reads Act has had, but we're going to do the best that we can to fulfill the spirit of the law, which we fully embrace, which is to increase reading proficiency for our kiddos. So we're all in on that front. So I'll conclude on that note.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Any questions for Dr. Bryant? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I mean, if this, Dr. Bryant, this needs to go through board connect, that's fine, but I was curious if PLC implementation, you know, we've heard good things from you. Marston Representatives spoke positively about it in a previous meeting, which was great to hear. Are we at the same place on all of our campuses, at least at the elementary level, regarding PLC implementation? I know that there was a period of time where we were expecting our staff to learn how to PLC before we engaged in the PLC work. Is that completed, or are we in the process? Or any update on that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure. I can give you a high-level overview. So at a high level, there is a standardized scope and sequence, especially for elementary teachers, because this is new to a lot of them, and we need them to fully understand that this is not a faculty meeting, it's not a department meeting. This is really an opportunity for teachers to own their development, which is why I've gone to quite a few PLCs, just to make sure that they're doing that, that they're getting the tools to really take ownership of it. So it's going to be a gradual release. So the first couple of months were really, one, talking about what a PLC is, and then we started moving into creating a vision for the school and relooking at the mission statement for the school. And I will say that some schools were a little off track because, and I witnessed this myself at a couple, they really took the new mission and vision very seriously. For some of these schools, they, you know, the mission and vision that was at that school existed dozens of years ago, and, you know, many of those teachers were no longer at the school. So I got to witness a lot of really intense conversations around values and what's important to me. So some fell off the we started moving into creating a vision for the school and re-looking at the mission statement for the school. And I will say that some schools were a little off track, because, and I witnessed this myself at a couple, they really took the new mission and vision very seriously. For some of these schools, they, you know, the mission and vision that was at that school existed dozens of years ago, and, you know, many of those teachers were no longer at the school. So I got to witness a lot of really intense conversations around values and what's important to me. So some fell off the sequence a little bit, but as I've gone to schools in more recent weeks, they seem to all be past the vision and mission, but they're still on that gradual release, where it's very principal-centric, providing information to the staff, and then the vision is, you know, around the end of the semester, beginning of next semester, it's going to be a full release into data, teacher-owned peer groups. And it's not going to be like this every year, but year-one implementation, we just need to make sure that we get what a PLC is, because unless you're very clear about it, and maybe I'm a little biased, because I'm a former PLC leader, it becomes a meeting, and it can't be a meeting, it has to be about student outcomes and teacher development.
Did you have a follow-up? Okay, other question for superintendent. Yes, Member Lessons?
You can follow up if you can't answer right now. I think one of the questions I've been noodling on is a concern that with the pivot to middle schools, we may not have the correct number of teachers who are certified at the secondary level. And if that's an incorrect assumption, please say so. But do we have enough teachers who will be able to pivot from an elementary certification to a secondary certification?
So we did look at the preliminary data, and quite a few educators at the elementary level have the ability to teach K through A, so that would cover us for a lot of teachers. There are a small subset that are K-6, but I hear that there's some grace at the state level where they can transfer to the middle school, and they may need to take an extra, you know, examination to get that additional endorsement, but that's the minority. But at the higher level, I've committed that we want to make this as easy as possible for the teachers. If they want to go to the middle school, whatever we need to do to get them, whatever they need from the state's end, we need to do, because we don't want that to be the barrier for staffing.
Thank you very much. Member Higgins?
Thank you. When the middle school proposal went through, I remember getting into a discussion in regards with some national studies that academically, how it could impact adversely some students and benefit others overall academically, didn't do great. But the issue that was raised tonight, like social-emotional learning, that aspect, those group of kids are the ones that, according to the study, are the ones that have the disadvantage and get academically impacted. Is there something that the school district can do or is planning to do to assist those that run into that problem of adjustments going into middle school rather than continuing on in elementary, going into middle school before they're socially, emotionally, really ready for that transition?
Sure, I mean, there are a couple of pragmatic things that you can do, thinking around strategic groupings of your sixth graders, recognizing they're in a different place developmentally than perhaps their seventh and eighth graders. So we need really strong instructional leadership at the middle school building level, and we can build that. We do have some experienced educators at the middle school level. And I will say, you know, initially, when we had these conversations around sixth grade, it was around a budget savings, it was around eliminating the middle school model, but this board said, we're not really interested in that, because we see a lot of value in it at this time. And there is a lot of value to the middle school model. There would have been cost savings had we gone away from it, but with the middle school model, the beautiful thing is that now at middle schools, we get an hour every week for professional learning communities through our Late Start Mondays, so that covers the data instructional leadership piece, but now we still have that middle school model time. So there were teachers that once used that for professional learning communities, but now that can double as the SEL time. And at a number of middle schools, like Romig, for example, I was there in their team room, where they use that middle school model time to talk about specific social-emotional needs of their students. So sixth grade staff members talk about sixth grade issues. So when you're implementing the middle school model with fidelity versus a junior-high mindset, you can reach a lot of students. It takes intentionality, it takes good teamwork amongst department teams and grade-level teams, but I've seen it, I taught in a 6-12 school, and those are exactly the type of things we're talking about, students have concerns, and we created action plans for how we address it. So I think at the personnel level and at the instructional leadership level for middle school, we can get there.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I'm curious about the charter optional programs, too. One of those is like Montessori, I heard a little bit about that, they don't even know what they want, I don't think, but they run a 1-3 and then a 4-6 grade system. Will their sixth graders automatically transition into the, into middle school, or will they have an option of trying to maintain the programming for that type of three grades all at one time?
That is a great question. So the great thing about ASD is that we have one of the most diverse portfolio of school systems that I've seen. In some ways, I think it's even more diverse than where I came from, which has a lot of choices, too. But the interesting thing is that we have charter programs, we have choice programs, we have choice programs within a neighborhood school, and then the ones that you're pointing out are actually whole-school optional themed programs. And specifically, the ones that you're mentioning are Montessori and the Chugash optional program, which instructionally have a pedagogical model based on combined grade levels. So usually, when you combine grade levels, it's a bad thing, a combo classroom is bad, but for Montessori and for Chugash optional, they really own it, and they leverage mentors of students to other students. So it was a very unique academic model, so that's why in our very initial conversations on this topic five or six months ago, we did say we need to seriously look at our alternative optional programs, because we give these schools options when it comes to their calendar, we give them options when it comes to when they choose their PLCs, we give them options when it comes to their curriculum. So for a program that's heavily based in multi-grade level instruction, you really do need to give them some space to figure out what we want to do. That's specifically true for a Montessori, the Denali Montessori, which is a whole-school Montessori, and for Chugash optional, because there are trade-offs. In one sense, they could preserve the integrity of their academic program and maintain the sixth grade as-is, but the shift in the district will be 6-8 middle schools, that's going to be the industry standard. So that means capacity will be more limited at those schools. So it may not be as easy as it was to get into X middle school as it was before, but those are the very intense and delicate conversations that small group of families need to have with the building.
Okay, thank you, Member, and we'll come back if you have another one. Let's move now, Member Lessons, did you ask, you asked a question already, hold on, anybody else, before I go to Member? Okay, why don't you go on?
Well, this is really a follow-up from Member Higgins, and maybe I would just ask you to extend your remarks to, because I was just at both schools, Chinook Open Optional Program, as well as Bowman's Open Optional Program, both of which have that sort of blended 5-6. So to what extent, I mean, we have so many choices, programs within schools, can you speak, maybe that's specific, and maybe there's information still coming, what is the future of maybe those specific programs look like?
Yeah, I can speak to that, and this is where it gets very complicated, right? Because we have a lot of different combinations of academic programs in our school, and whereas the ones that Member Higgins was talking about were these whole-school optional themed programs, now the ones that you're talking about are also incredible programs, but they're smaller populations within a broader neighborhood program. So in other words, unlike Denali Montessori, a two-door Montessori would have a neighborhood program and an optional Montessori program. So you have two cohorts of sixth graders of different size, and the same goes with the Bowman Optional Program and the other one that you mentioned. They're fantastic, but you have two different cohorts of sixth graders, you know, within the same building, and one option is to leave it alone, the other option is to move everybody, and the other option is to move some up and keep some. And the latter option is very not a best practice, because these kids have friends, you know, within both situations. So we had to make a difficult decision of being consistent with the board memo, which was to move neighborhood elementary students in elementary school into neighborhood middle school programs. And those are neighborhood programs with optional components.
Follow-up?
Sorry, this is like the alphabet soup of ASD. Birtwood, Birtwood ABC has a sixth grade population now, or maybe it doesn't, there was...
Somebody can speak at the Birtwood.
I just feel like that's another...
Birtwood is only a K-5.
It is already K-5, okay, never mind.
As is us, who sit in elementary with their optional program.
So I have myself in queue for the next question. Were you done, Member Lessons? Okay. So we have been doing 6-8 combination at Clark Begich, Mearlake. And I guess I'm wondering, have we, have we looked at specific data in those schools? I mean, they run incredibly well. I do know that they are, you know, they were part of the, you know, the buildings were renovated, they have more space, you know, so, but we, this is not new. I mean, we have been, we've had sixth graders into middle, and I guess my question is, what have we learned? What are the limitations? Are there any? Have we, have we looked at our own internal data to know what, you know, what's happening in Clark Begich in Mearlake? I mean, I mean, I think I know what's, I know what's happening at Clark and Begich. And it's wonderful, but, but I don't, I don't know, it seems to me that if we could, if we could share what's happening in those schools that's been doing it now 10, 12 years, well, maybe that's an exaggeration, but they've been doing it for years. It seems like that, that, that might be information that parents might want to hear.
Good point, so in other words, it's not new?
It's not, no, it's not.
But there are opportunities to learn about what makes those effective, what can we learn for our new middle schools going into this model, that's a great point.
No, because I do know that the, you know, that, that sits, and I'm a former middle school principal, so I do have some ideas about this stuff, but I'm not going to share them all tonight. But I do know that it's not a new strategy for this district. I do know that kids are thriving in those schools. I do know that there must be information in those buildings from those principals. I know, I mean, what Brent, I don't know who's the principal at Begich right now, but is Brendan still there, Mr. Wilson? The stuff he was doing was absolutely incredible, and, and yes, it worked for 6, 7, and 8th grade. And so, and that's, 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 so I just think that we probably should give some attention to what we're already doing, because it's not, we are not reinventing the wheel. We are carrying out a tradition that's been set, not for the city, for the whole body of the city as we are now, but we know that it works, and we know that kids can be successful. Anyway, my two cents, Member, let's go back around again, Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Wanted to take a different direction for just a moment with the state enrollment count. I was digging in attendance data, and I saw that we're, we have a higher current 90% attendance student population, highest since 2020, and we're, I think it's 14 points above where we ended last year, so 71-plus percent of our students are attending school 90% of the time at this point. I was curious if administration has delved into kind of what's going well there, and if there's anything that we can do to support as a board, given that I don't think it's on track to be one of our measurable goals that we'll be tracking this year formally through our meetings. Thank you.
Great, was there anything that you'd like to?
So, so through the chair?
Yes.
Member Jacobs. Although it isn't one of our goals this year, we are taking attendance very seriously. We've had some trainings with our principal groups, looking at our new data dashboard Huey, and being able to actually drill down and see what students are actually having difficulties this year. And different principals are taking different action steps with those specific groups, and so even, although it isn't one of them that we're looking at for goal monitoring, it is something that's very important to us, because we do know that in order for us to move our students and have them reading, we need them in the school. So that is a big part of what our schools are doing this year.
Did you have a follow-up? Okay?
Just, yeah, just again, I appreciate that the metric has increased, and if we can be of any support in making sure that, you know, we mirror 2020 levels going forward, and I'm willing to help, too, whether it be, you know, mentioning community council meetings or some other board initiative, I agree it's important, even though it's not one of our chosen goals or interim goals. Thank you.
Thank you, going back around, Member Higgins, anything else, follow-up?
By cutting the mic off, maybe I'll preface it that way. I'm, I'm all in favor of change, because the academic results that we got right now are not there, we have to make change, and we have to be willing to do it. And so even though when I have concerns about one approach or the other, I am totally supportive of doing things differently. And so the issue of elementary, realizing that larger elementary allows teachers not have to teach a third, fourth grade combination, academic impact, what that has, all those issues make a difference to me. Only one concern there was a presentation I remember Mr. Anderson and a consultant made at one middle school, I think it was going to go up to 116% or some higher percentage, and said, oh, but that's not going to be a problem. I hope that we look at that carefully, because, I mean, we can, we allow so many students to go into different school zones that we can, if we're overcapacity, we have ability to change the boundaries on different schools and do other things. I'd hate to think of any school being detrimental impacted by being that much overcapacity if we can avoid it within it. But like I said, is, even though I wasn't totally supportive of all the changes that are going on, I am totally supportive of whatever we need to do to make it successful after the boys voted, we need to do that, and you've got my full support that way.
Thank you, Member Higgins, any response?
Sure, so I agree, that's definitely something that we need to keep our eye on, would be what is it actually going to look like in terms of capacity at the middle schools? What I will say is that we did review this data with the board at the highest level, and it does appear that we have some demographic bubble. So in other words, just like our elementary schools are becoming more and more underutilized, eventually that's going to trickle up to the middle schools. So even if a middle school were at 100% capacity two years from now, that probably won't be the case in five years. And that just goes to show you how seriously we have to take, getting the community's feedback when it comes to the potential of school consolidations and that sort of thing, because underutilized space potentially leads to less, less gains in academic outcomes, because you have more combination classes and a lot of other sacrifices that we want to avoid with the limited resources we have.
One more?
Follow-up, one comment. When we talk about overcapacity and that sort of situation, all that assumes that our classroom sizes remains the way they are right now. We know what Mike Pike is on, and we know what Level 48 are doing. If we had the additional funding from the state to lower our classroom sizes to what 36, 36 states have for the maximum effective classroom sizes, we would have 1 through 15, K through 3, 25 above that, we would need a lot more classrooms to do that. So I don't want to see schools lost to anything else, but I'm just, I don't want the public to think that we have an exorbitant amount of excess of anything, we just have underfunding to be able to meet the goals of what we would have if we were in a low 48 right now.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pat?
I would like to address some of the testimonies brought forward today. It seems like the major sentiment is that teachers are underfunded and stretched in already enough, and by using our PLC times, which we intended for them to use to, if we take ownership of their curriculums, are we now giving them another burden by letting those PLC times double down as times for them to assuage the, I guess, negative impacts of transitioning sixth graders into middle schools, which was substantiated by the evidence brought forward today, like decreased or decline in social-emotional well-being and academic performances?
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the superintendent regarding his update? Or comment? All right, thank you. So we are, thank you, Dr. Bryant. We are now moving on to item J, which is our school board and administration comments. So, there, where shall we begin? We'll begin with you, Member Donley. You're quiet tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. As a follow-up to the public testimony supporting parent right to know, we heard at the last meeting, I have drafted a proposed board policy I will be providing to you that would override the existing administrative guidelines to, with safeguards, change the current presumption against parent notification to one in favor of parent notification for secondary students. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donley? Let's just keep going around. Member Jacobs?
Oh, yeah, no, I appreciate the testimony, and I agree, the district needs to remain focused on how we can support our educators, given our fiscal realities, some of the supports are endowed... are undoubtedly funding related, but there's certainly other ways that we can move that needle. So excited to continue as a board, keeping our focus on how we can support our students, families, and education professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
Well, like, like everyone else, I do appreciate the testimony, people coming out here caring enough about the education and the, and the kids and wanting to voice their concerns, particularly the social emotional aspects and all the other parts with some of the changes. I also appreciate the concerns about how many teachers we were losing every year and what that impact is on education and how difficult it is for the April School District and the impact it has on our kids when we have this type of turnover. We knew a couple of years ago, I attended a presentation where lower 48 was targeting teachers among three jobs to leave to go to lower 48 because the salary is more competitive, the cost of living is lower, and they thought they, they're trying to fill jobs desperately, and they're targeting any place they can get. And of course, we don't have the defined benefit retirement yet from the legislature. So we have a lot of challenges ahead of us within that. But I will say, I'll reiterate the early comment I made, regardless of the decisions, how people vote at different times on, on issues, once we've made a decision, we got to do everything we can to make it successful. We've got to, we've got to implement changes to be able to improve academic outcomes. And I applaud the superintendent for bringing forth ideas to us that while it may be not always pro or positive received by some groups, it's focused on kids, and that's critical to me. And so if we're going to make improvement on academic outcomes, we need that type of challenge on a regular basis. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Member Higgins. Member Lessons, floor is yours.
Oh, good. Well, I wanted to begin by thanking everyone who came here this evening. I appreciate the comments, the questions. I also appreciate the administration for humoring and acknowledging a number of the questions that I've passed along in recent days. And I appreciate that it'll take time to dive into them. But I think that we'll get there. Quick nuts and bolts, we have a finance committee meeting this week on Thursday at noon. That'll be in person and available on Zoom. Looking forward to diving into some substantive conversations relative to the district's finances and elements of the foundation formula. I am also, President Bellamy is also taking the edunomics, we're in the edunomics cohort again with Georgetown, which I'll just say, they spotted us for free this time. So no offense to ASD, which is great. In one of my sessions last week, I learned about a study out of Stanford University, a lab called Ed Opportunity. You can look it up online. And I think for me, it hits the nail on the head of what ASD story has been and what it could be. And our story is one of growth. Our story is not one of astronomical third grade proficiency. I'm really struggling to wrap my mind around our current goal, even a revised goal, looking at third grade proficiency. Because what the data we just received tonight in our M class screening, and what the data we've been getting for years and years, shows us is that students across Alaska and in Anchorage come in with low access to early childhood educational opportunities. But what we're really good at is accelerating learning over the course of their time in the school system. So I would encourage other board members, I'll send out the link, you can play with the visualized data. I want you to watch the Anchorage dot. It's more like Chicago Public Schools than it is to fancy East Coast and Aaron Dell, Maryland, where kids come into the system having had a lot of opportunities. Anchorage Schools, Juno Schools, Fairbanks Schools, throughout 2008 to 2018, the save, the set of that, that data set, they go up. They go up at a faster rate than normal, faster than the rest of the United States. And that is what I want us to double down on. I want us to double down on growth. And I think if we set our sights on third grade proficiency, that's not enough. And you asked earlier, President Bellamy, about what's happening at Clark and Begich. And I've got a success story, and I've got a story of failure. What happens successfully, if you, and I was looking at our, our new map data just out from this fall, we've got 27 schools, if I counted correctly, with 50% or fewer of our third grade students reading at benchmark at, at or above the 40th percentile. That gets less in fourth grade. There's 22 schools at that level. That gets less at fifth grade, 18 schools at that level. That's a third as many, or 30% more students at schools at, above a 50% reading above the benchmark. That is progress. The problem is that they increasingly become concentrated into Clark and Begich. And then they get concentrated into, well, actually, it's not just Clark and Begich, it's Clark and Begich.
Mirlech.
And when, when they're hands you Central, Begich, and Clark.
Okay, but they don't all have sixth grade.
Oh, I know. But I'm just, as you go through the system, sorry, I'm skipping ahead to seventh grade now. And then in eighth grade, and then into ninth grade. And so we have a con, we have growth, but we have a concentration of the kids who are left behind. And that is our challenge. That is our challenge is to not leave kids behind.
Exactly.
So I have spent a lot of time trying to think about our, our board goals, and especially in light of, it's a public announcement, it's now on D's website, that it's, it's likely that the State Board of Education will receive revised cut scores.
In March.
The timeline is December 6. D's going to submit a revised regulation to the State Board. There'll be a 30 day public comment in January. The State Board will review them again with likely approval. And you know what? Frankly, districts aren't going to get that information, again, I'm sorry, this is about the AK STAR test from last year, until March of 2024, which, based on our budgeting process, is too late to allocate resources towards where we really need. So even if the State Board changes the cut scores and increases whatever proficient is, I don't see it being close to 80%. And I don't see it as being useful information to inform our budget decisions. So I think we need to look at areas of growth, what's working, and where we can allocate our precious few and maybe fewer resources to do the most good. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. Member Wilson?
So here we go. I had the privilege of attending the King Tech Industry Advisory Night. It was an amazing event with such, it really had such positive energy from our industry partners that participated. I believe there was almost 70 industry partners that participated in this evening. And the partners each had the opportunity to participate in conversations with classes that are related to the industry they represented. So several of the King Tech, past King Tech students gave an update on their current careers and how, what they learned while they were at King Tech and the industry connections they made while they were at that school were key elements in their current success. And, and the students presented have really found their niche in, in the careers that they've chosen. And this is a wonderful example of the amazing work being done by teachers and a great example of working with industry partners to help our students find their path and their success. And so I would again like to thank our educators for the work they're doing to educate and support our students. And also wanted to share that our communications meeting is scheduled for Thursday at 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments, Mr. Pack? Any closing comments?
Well, I think it's very apparent that we're, as we as a district are juggling a lot of issues and changes this year than ever. And I'm glad that in order to make sure that no one gets the short end of the stick that we have concerned, parents, students, and faculty members showing up to testify and express their needs in front of the board. And I'm also glad that our school board in our district is throwing out ideas and solutions to these problems. And I'm confident to say that I have a lot to report for our next revised board meeting.
Thank you very much. We're glad you're here with us. Dr. Bryant, do you have any closing comments?
And no further comments. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. I, just a couple of reminders. We will not have a governance committee meeting. As you know, Member Holloman is out of state, and he will be back for the, for our next meeting. So we won't have one on Thursday. All right. So we will have, but we will have finance and communications. Okay, thank you. I think this month is Filipino American Heritage Month. I think we, I've seen a couple of grand kickoffs throughout the community. I don't have any, any of the details. But I, I would like to invite board members to seek out some of those opportunities and support. It's not just about being Filipino American. It's about all of our neighbors in the community. So I always find that very, very helpful. And, and I learned a lot in participating. I participated in the IEES math in addition to, I don't even know what's happening with me with all this math and, and edunomics. But I'd learned, I learned, it was actually a free webinar. It was in three parts. I think I still have one part to do. Extremely helpful with how we are re-envisioning math. It's the STEM, it's the STEAM, it's all kinds of wonderful ways that, that people are reaching kids across the country and engaging them and exciting them about math. I found it very, very useful. And I will try to pass those things on. I don't know how I got it, but I'm glad I did, because it was very, very useful. Board members, if you are planning on attending the AASB conference, make sure Amanda knows. You can just let her, give her a thumbs up now, because you have to be registered. And I would like to invite some, a couple of board members to consider serving on the Resolutions Committee. I think I reached out to Member Lessons already, and we need at least one more. So think about that. And I, I don't know who is going to the Council of Greater City Schools this time.
What dates are those?
For AASB. It'll be November 9 through the 12, I believe, here in town. And I don't know that we have board members going to this year's Council of Greater City Schools Conference, but we do have teams that are, that will be presenting. So that's, that's wonderful. And with that, those concludes my comments and reminders. We are now at item K. Adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second to adjourn. Any opposition to adjourn? Seeing none? We are adjourned. Thank you for your time.